Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, and the time is 6:00 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Copel City Council meeting. There is a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session on the first-floor conference room. I will be out and announce when work session is open to the public. Thank you very much. Into, I'm sorry, we have adjourned from executive session. The time is 6:59 PM. We will move into work session in the first-floor conference room, and the public is invited to join us. The time is 7:03 PM. This is, we are going to convene into work session. We do have a quorum present, really. So, item A is discussion regarding agenda items. We've got quite a bit of consent agenda and very little on the regular agenda. Anybody have any questions about consent or anything else? I was watching people bruising the list, so I was giving them a chance to look. What's that? I would hope so. All right, so seeing no comments, let's move on. Item B is discussion regarding board and commissions attendance policy and citizens' appearance. Ms. Owens?
Yes, they should attend.
I agree. Good evening, Mayor Council. My name is Ashley Owens. I'm here tonight to speak direction from you regarding the attendance policy for the city's board, commissions, and committees. This item is in response to city councils discussing the current attendance policy during last year's appointment process. So staff was asked to research how surrounding cities handle board member absences, and now I'm here to provide you an overview of what we found. The person at the desk is not. Or in my slide. It's really not. It's not going to make a difference. The current policy is as stated. If a board member is absent for three consecutive regularly scheduled meetings or if a board member is absent for 25% of the regularly scheduled meetings, within a 12-month period, the position shall be declared vacant and the vacancy shall be filled for the remainder of the unexpired term by the city council within 30 days after the vacancy occurs. So, this policy applies to all of our boards and commissions and committees. And what's not stated in the policy is that as part of our internal practice, our office reaches out to a board member if they receive two absences and that they receive a warning letter reminding them of the current policy as well as letting them know that they've reached the two-absence threshold. So if a third absence is reached, an item will be placed on the city council's agenda, and it's at the discretion of city council on whether the board member is dismissed from their board. As I stated earlier, we reached out to cities in the region to hear how they handled absences. We found that our policy is in line with the region when it came to the total number of absences, which is three. However, we noticed that about half of the cities allow for an excused absence if prior notification is given. So, what is an excused absence? An excused absence means a failure to attend a regular or special called meeting of the board or commission that is a result of illness, medical condition, or service, attendance of a funeral for an immediate family member, jury duty, vacation, or participation in a religious or work-related activity. So, the definition that I just read represents what happens in our lives. Sickness happens, work takes priority, or a planned vacation can land on your board's regularly scheduled meeting date. So I want to stop here and say definitively that there is not a problem with board member absences as right now. Our meetings are being productive, our board members are happy. So this is just in response to you all discussing this at our appointment process last year. If city council would like to move forward with an excused absence policy, we can do that, and that's why I'm asking for your feedback tonight. But currently, as it stands, we do not have a problem with absences. So just wanted to state that upfront. If you would like to move forward with an excused absence policy, my recommendation to you would be every calendar year, each board member is allowed two excused absences and one unexcused absence. The difference between an excused absence, in my opinion, would provide city council context as to why a board member has missed their meetings. This would just be an improved way of tracking the absence rather than just giving you a number on a page. This doesn't really change the amount of absences that a board member can have. Again, our observation is that our board members are dedicated to their boards, and when an absence happens, it's just because other things take priority. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have. And again, no action is required tonight by you all. Of course.
I'm looking at the memorandum. And I'm looking at this last paragraph, which says if a board member is absent for more than two excused absences, then they could essentially have to forfeit their position, even though it was excused?
Correct, and not forfeit their position. It would be at the discretion of city council.
Okay, but that would come up?
Yes.
Even though it was excused?
Yes.
Seems kind of harsh when you have an excuse absence and then, like, if you had jury duty, just say, you're sick, God forbid a family member.
Something were to happen. Again, this is a recommendation that I've created. I'm looking for your feedback to say whether or not you even want to go this route or you take what I've written in the memorandum and change it.
I could understand it as unexcused, but then they have a reason why, because obviously if they don't want to be there, then yeah, they should forfeit it. But if unforeseen circumstance arises, then it's harsh to me.
Anybody? Kevin?
So I heard you say in your presentation that kind of the idea behind excused versus unexcused is just to give a little bit more clarification as to the reason why. So obviously, if it's excused, it had, oh, yes, my words care. Wait, there you go. So basically, that's just to provide context to council. If that comes up on the, you know, the agenda for dismissal from the board, we would have that information. There's been two excused, you know, one unexcused, so we can decide, hey, do we want to retain them on the board or do we want to dismiss them? Is that, just, I want to make sure I understand that.
That is absolutely correct. And it would also be helpful during your reappointment process or the appointment process in the fall.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Don? Currently, it's three. If, once you hit your third, you're...
Then it comes up for discretion.
On council's discretion?
That is correct.
For any reason, okay. So this is actually somewhat similar, except you're now putting context. You're defining...
Yes.
The excuse. Basically, you can be excused for anything except for, I just didn't want to come tonight, right? I mean, pretty much anything else really qualifies.
Yes.
I'm just curious, why would we not do up to three excused? Well, I guess I was thinking, what sort of the thought? Is that just getting too many? Are we just getting too many at that point?
Don't you mean three unexcused?
Well, I guess I was saying three. Well, that's what I'm, I'm wondering if I'm just getting too hung up on excused versus unexcused, because we already, already you get three strikes.
Well, you get three absences, period.
Yeah. And we don't really have a definition of excused currently.
That's correct.
It's just sort of...
It's an absence.
So it's not that much, or 25%. Most of our boards probably meet 10 times a year. Is that probably fair?
That's a fair number.
It's only two, two absences anyway. Okay.
Kevin?
I was just wondering if you were just dying to talk over that.
Well, now the chair and you're the vice president.
So we're going to have to move you two apart. You're not going to be allowed to sit next to each other.
No, I guess just to understand some context, how many people have been removed from boards?
So I've been in this office since 2018, and there have not been any board removals due to, due to absences.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, the reason that this was brought up at our retreat is because a board member approached me about a board that he was on and that there was another member that was not attending the meetings, and it had a great impact because he was the chair of the board. I mean, yeah, the chairman of the board. And they couldn't get, they couldn't keep things rolling. So he asked me to bring this up. So there's one case that I know of in, you know, the nine years that I've been here. I think every, all other times, everybody's, you know, shown up like they're supposed to.
I, sorry, I guess that was going to be my thing. I don't know if there being any issues other than one. So, right, it's, you're saying it's not a problem?
It is not a problem.
So, yeah.
Please do?
Yeah, Ashley, just a clarification. If a board member misses three consecutive number of meetings, are they automatically out or you will put it on an agenda item for council to vote?
The way that the ordinance reads is that it shall be declared vacant. But I wouldn't, I would never take, I would never dismiss somebody from a board. It would be at the discretion of council because you are the appointing body.
And it's not three in a row, it's three, period. For boards and commissions, it's a total of three.
It says consecutive.
It does say consecutive regularly scheduled meetings.
Or, or 25%. So that still adds up. Okay. I knew it was three, but they were alternating. It still is three.
It says, it says declare it. And you've got to, it's ministerial, but you have to do it, staff can't do it.
But you have to vote for it.
Yep. Okay.
But it says it shall be, right? I mean, it's not a...
It's ministerial, so you shall do it. It just requires you to do it.
Do it.
Not say something.
You have to do it.
It's ministerial.
That would be a consent, a typical consent agenda item.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
Yes. Don?
I think I like where you're going with this, just because it gives some structure, just like we did with, when we redid some of the, you know, some of the charter or some of the boards and commissions and tried to better define what we had. I think the way you're going is, is a good way to go. Like in the situation you're probably referring to, I think it would give some context or some definition, because I don't think those are the reasons, not, I don't think those are the reasons the board wasn't meeting is because of the chairs. I just think it gives more structure. So I think it's actually, this approach is, gives us something to go with. So I guess I'm in favor of it, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. So what are we in favor of?
Well, she's like, lay it out here.
Continue the interpretation as we, as it stands. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
No, no, I was, I was, the revised, the revised. Defining excused, excused absence and allowing for so many plus unexcused.
Is everybody okay with that?
I think it's a good structure.
I'm okay with that.
Context is always good.
There you go.
Thank you. So, next item was, that was attached to your packet was, this is again, coming back discussion regarding written comments being received by city council. Direction was that we would not be reading those into the record any longer, that you would be receiving those via hard copy as well as Zoom speakers would be pushed to the bottom of the list and in-person speakers would have priority. So these rules that I attached to the agenda are just these order of business rules. So if all is good, we will move forward with publishing these rules on our website. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Crushed Kevin?
I was just telling Ashley she did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, item C, discussion regarding city council committee assignments. We have received a request from the Copel Arts Foundation to have a liaison appointed.
From who, the Copel Arts?
Foundation.
Foundation, okay. When did they meet?
I don't know. This is the, this is the fundraising group that is responsible for doing the business side.
Gotcha, like the arts center and all that.
It's outside of the purview, direct purview of the city, but they do support the arts center. Once a month? They believe it's once a month, but they're, they'll verify. So this is really just administrative? Doesn't, unless anyone's got a strong desire not to appoint someone, really just looking for a volunteer? You guys are going to have to duke it out because you raised your hand at the same time.
Yeah, both raised your hands.
He knows karate.
I nominated Don Carroll.
And he can be your backup.
I'll be your vice president.
Ah, that's good. You'll be my brother.
It's just looking for a volunteer.
All right, we'll put your name down, Don. Thank you very much.
Done.
Easy. All right, we are at the end of work session. The time is 7:19 PM. And we're adjourned, and we'll move into the Copel regular city council meeting at 7:30. Congratulations. Congratulations, Don. One, two, three, four, five. What's up? I'm, I'm ju-
Council members Neville's.
Good evening, everybody. The time is 7:32 PM. We're going to move into regular session of the Copel City Council. As a reminder, persons wishing to speak during the citizens' appearance must sign the appropriate register located outside the council chambers and list their residence address. We do have two people signed up to speak so far, and if anybody else is wanting to speak, please do sign up. Tonight, our invocation is going to be given by allies faith leader Mohammed El Muji, and then we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing.
Good evening. I come to you today as the mayor said, on behalf of City of Copel, Alizan Community Interfaith Group, and I thank you for inviting us today. If I may ask for permission to observe a minute of silence for the horror of today's shooting victims in Uvalde, Texas. Please join me in prayer. In the name of our eternal and merciful Lord, all praises to God, the Lord of the universe, creator of heaven and earth, King of this life and the next eternal life. You alone we worship, and you alone we ask for help. Guide us along the straight path, the path of those you have blessed, not those you are displeased with. Our Lord, we pray for the deceased children and their teacher of today's South Texas shooting and their families. We share their sorrow and loss of their innocent loved ones. We ask for guidance to find solutions to this ongoing madness and its impact on our country. Our Lord, we ask you to bless us, our families, our community. Guide and empower our elected and city officials to make decisions that maintain our family and small-town environment. Guide them to maintain the harmony and sense of inclusion in our beautiful city. Remove from our hearts any ills towards others. Help us focus on our commonalities while appreciating our diversity. Help us set good examples for our children by supporting what is right or by standing up united against what is wrong or anything that displeases you. Inspire us to face adversity with humility and courage while swiftly addressing them. Help us maintain the integrity and good reputation of our city while continually self-improving. Finally, our Lord, and as represented in this chamber, we ask you to reward those of us that volunteer their time and effort to be of service to others. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, one nation, under God, for liberty and justice.
Item number six is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their residence address. Each speaker must state his or her name and their address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. An individual's speaker time may be extended for an additional two minutes time with the approval of the majority of the council. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut in and break in and make the request to the mayor and the city council if they would like to extend the speaker's time for an additional two minutes. Signed up tonight, we have Manager Kumar Doberein. I'm sorry about the last name. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Manoj Doburia. I live at 831 Preakness Lane, Copel, Texas. And first of all, I would like to thank you to the city for extending our walkway to the connecting Champion Hollow Trail so we can enjoy the trail in this lovely weather. And one more reason we are here with our community members and they will, to invite City of Copel for the walkathon for, at a sound. So I have my family and friends member, Mr. Om will speak more about that. Is there permission for that? Yeah.
Hello and namaste, everyone. My name is Om Wagila, and my address is 2308 Stampede Lane. I'm a resident of Copel and a Copel High School graduate, class of 2021, currently studying aerospace engineering at Texas A&amp;M University. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. We would like to formally invite everyone with the city council and the residents to an event that is hosted by BAPS charities. With Susan G. Komen as our beneficiary this year, BAPS Charities' annual Walkathon in the Joy of Others will be- will be held at the Sound at Cypress Waters in Capel, Texas at eight AM on June fourth. Several community, business, and political leaders will be attending this event. Annual walk-run events are hosted by BAPS charities across seventy cities in the United States. Parking, refreshment, and lunch are complimentary. It is a family event, and we look forward to seeing you there. For more information, please visit www.bapscharities.org. Select US and then Dallas as your location. You may pre-register online if you prefer, or visit on-site, and we can assist you there. Once again, thank you for allowing us with the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Owens, did we have anybody else sign up?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item number seven is a presentation by the New Tech High School students on a water sustainability project. And Drew Nance, or, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Kim Tean is gonna be introducing this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I did wanna take just a moment before I turn the presentation over to Mr. Porzio and to Drew to provide you just a little history on our partnership with New Tech. During the nineteen, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year, we met with Mr. Porzio to discuss how we could partner together to provide learning experiences to students in Capel. During that year, in January of twenty-twenty, we took about fifty-six students and chaperones on a tour of the water sewer system. They got to go into a water tower. We just drove by the lift station, and then we went into the pump station where they were able to see the technology that used to actually get water from the system to their faucet and then out to the treatment plant. But then, as you know, COVID hit a couple months later, and so the project was put on hold. But Mr. Porzio reached out last school year, and they were able to do the project, but virtually. And so this year, they wanted to continue the project, and they were able to actually go to the schools. And so it was a little bit different project, and Mr. Porzio is gonna talk to you a little bit about the differences in this beta project that we're still working on, and I think where he wants to take it and what the students did. And then Drew will be here to provide what the project is and take you through to kind of what they, what the students take away from this project.
All right, I'm Avio Porzio, and this project has been a lot of fun. We've used some of the extra time that we have after the AP tests for our AP stats students, as well as some of the extra time at the elementary schools, specifically the fourth and fifth grade classes, to be able to incorporate mathematics, some basic graphing of, graphing of data, and, and bringing kind of the joy of sharing mathematics between high schoolers and elementary schools, bringing those classrooms to life, and with the idea of getting, getting the message into the community to utilize the app and just the awareness of that. So this was a beta project where we looked at taking all of the infrastructure for doing it virtually, which is how we did it last year, to actually in-person, which was a lot more engaging and pretty exciting versus the virtual. And it just required a lot of the logistics that happens when you have students off-campus and et cetera. So I am going to introduce Drew Nance. He is gonna be able to share kind of the, the project from a learner-student perspective. And he is headed to Baylor University next year. He is a senior. And it'll be, his degree will be business management. So this is, he participated in this as well as about six of his classmates. And so he'll be able to kind of bring, bring the story to life of what it was like to experience as a student. So Drew Nance.
Hello, everyone. As Mr. Porzio said, I'm Drew Nance. I'm a senior at New Tech Capel, and this is the water project. There we go. All right, so our mission for this project, basically, we wanted to reach out to all these elementary schoolers and teach them about graphs and pie charts and all the sort of statistics measurements, and also teach them about their water conservation and how much they consume and how they can take steps to reduce that. So some of the things that we were making sure that we kind of nailed in, where we wanted to get them very excited and involved with their water consumption and conservation, we wanted to increase the competition and awareness of conservation. Thank you. So first, we started to introduce how, how water affects many lives throughout the, the city and the world through a story of a fish, which I will show later. Then we analyzed water usage from the schools. And then afterward, we played a Kahoot game to kind of engage everybody and get them all excited about water conservation, and then we answered questions. So this is the story of the fish. Basically, we talked about what the, what the fish is and what it needs to survive, what we need to survive, how we get all of our water, and how much we use. So here's the story. I'll kind of just skim through it. Basically, he gets a fish, and the fish can talk. It's like a magical fish. And so kind of asks, you know, what do you need? And the fish is like, oh, just like you. I need food, water, and shelter, and... And then he asks, well, how do you use water? And the fish says, well, I live in it because I get oxygen from it. So then, the fish asks the student how the water, where the water comes from that he uses. And the fish then teaches him afterward. So this is basically just an image that we showed them and explained to them. And then we looked at water usage. Some of the students brought water, water consumption data from home. Mostly, we, however, used the Denton Creek, which is where I went, and the other elementary schools data. So this is just a bar graph and a pie chart. So afterwards, of course, we did the Kahoot. We didn't do this part right here. We replaced that with the Kahoot. And then afterward, after each sort of milestone in this project, we sort of gave out little prizes to keep them engaged and excited because, you know, who doesn't like free stuff? We started with stickers, and then when completing a pie chart, we gave them water bottles. And then after the Kahoot answers, the top people on the leaderboard would get sunglasses. And we ended up just giving everybody sunglasses at the end. So... So for the conclusion, our end goals were, we wanted some engagement on the portal, and successful engagement in water conservation. We wanted to teach them how to limit the water usage and bring awareness about how much water we actually consume, because it is pretty crazy. So we worked with Denton Creek and Lakeside. The students were very engaged. They were very excited when we were doing these presentations, which was really awesome. And we got to use the water data from the schools, sort of teach them how to create graphs from data and how to make it relate to water consumption. This is our first year doing this in person. Scheduling was a little bit difficult, but it was much more exciting than online, because we were actually there. We got to really engage with the students. Overall, it was a great success, I believe. We felt like we really engaged people, really taught them, and they are really gonna now take some steps to draw back that water consumption. This is a picture. That's me right there on the, on the left over there, or right, sorry. And that's all the students, and we were wearing our sunglasses because we were the coolest kids in the school. Thank you very much. I invite any questions, if y'all have questions.
Council, Councilmember Nevels.
Hey, thank you so much. That was a great presentation. Would you mind explaining to maybe some of our more seasoned council members what a Kahoot is?
Right, so a Kahoot is a game. It's online. It's essentially a list of questions, sort of like a quiz, but, you know, with little background music and nice graphics. And everybody joins the Kahoot from their devices, phones, iPads, laptops, whatever. And you'll see an answer, or a question up on the board, and then you have a time limit, and you kind of answer your questions. And at the end, there's a leaderboard, like, oh, this person, this many people got it wrong, this many people got it right. There's actually a bar graph that it shows you. And then you can sort of teach how, why people got it wrong or why they got it right. And it's sort of a fun competition to be first, so that's what a Kahoot is.
Thank you very much. I just want to say, I appreciate your time spending with the learners at Denton Creek and Lakeside. I love that both of those schools have water names in them, so I know that was a great correlation when you were putting this project together, right? So...
I did not think about that.
No, you always say, no, you're absolutely right.
That's right. Yes, sir.
But no, just want to say thank you so much for your time. This is a great project, and what are you gonna study after, or at Baylor?
I'm studying business management.
Excellent. What do you want to do with that afterwards?
So I'm gonna start off most likely in sales, because I know I'll be a good salesperson. As I'm selling this project to y'all. And then afterward, I'm gonna work my way up into management, and then either stay in management, keep climbing, or go to something in finance.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your time today, and best wishes at Baylor.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So Drew, hang on a minute. We're not, we're not, we're not done with you yet. Anybody have any other questions? So one of the questions that we asked last time around, I believe, was where are we gonna go with this program in the future? So, you know, where's, where's our continuity and what's the next step?
Well, that might be a question for Mr. Porzio.
Well, we kind of call these beta projects because we're kind of figuring out how to get a program like this in education. And so our hopes would maybe start it earlier on in the year and make it so that there is a sequence, like the first one is an introduction to graphing, like what we've done, and the next, and then we would come later on in the year and, and use water data from their homes. But engaging more of the district leaders in kind of building a, a larger group of elementary schools that we're working with, as well as a more sequential process is kind of what we have in mind. And so we'll reflect over the summer and kind of make a game plan.
So will we see you back up here next year?
Yes. Just like he said.
Good answer.
Yes, certainly.
All right, council, any other questions? Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say, great job, Drew. And Kim, I'm kind of disappointed that he got to see the lift station and the water treatment process. I didn't even get to see that, so you actually, you're in a better position. But all I'm gonna say is that, you know, I think Councilmember Nevel was actually looking for one of those glasses, but he's also disappointed that you didn't bring any glasses for him. Sunglasses, sunglasses.
Sorry about that.
No. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your time tonight. Item number eight is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen, and council for your consideration tonight are items A through G. Does anybody have any item they would like to have pulled from the agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Nevels.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Consent Agenda items A through G.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Hill, all in favor?
Long, Keenan Smith, Carol Nevels, John Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. That is the end of the consent agenda, and now we move into our single item on the regular agenda, which is item number nine, Consider Appointment of Mayor Pro Tem is required by Section 3.05 of the Home Rule Charter. Without reading it, it says each year after elections, which we didn't have this year, but this would be the appropriate Tuesday to do this, that we will, the council will select a mayor pro tem. Is there any... I can open the floor for a motion or discussion. Councilmember John.
Mayor, I may, I want to go to nominate Councilmember Matthews as the mayor pro tem, because I think that is the, as we discussed, that is the procedure that we had in place, and he is next in line. So I make a motion to nominate Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to nominate Councilmember Matthew for mayor pro tem. Is there a second? Councilmember Hill, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Long, Keenan Smith, Carol Nevels, John Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you, all of you. I look forward to serving in this capacity. Thank you.
Sometimes you don't know what you're getting. All right, item number ten is a city manager report. Mr. Lann.
Mayor and council, thank you. Three things to report this evening. First, beginning with Beltline. We appreciate everybody that has been not driving down South Beltline. The peak hour is not as bad as it could have been. I believe the last count was a little less than ten thousand, or around ten thousand vehicles per day are not using South Beltline. So that's, that's pretty significant. Paving, if you, if you have driven through there, paving is expected to begin within the next couple of weeks. One of the things you may have noticed is the message boards have been down for the last week because it appears that someone has accessed the cellular modems that we were using for service. So we've been working to isolate that. So the bottom line is, at least the signs weren't hacked, but the cellular service was hacked. Right, right. The logo paint for the wagon wheel elevated storage tank has been received, and as long as the weather holds up this weekend, it looks like we'll get to painting that. So if you remember, we talked about timing, and so maybe we'll get that done this weekend. And then last night, there was a great meeting with the neighborhood for Bullock and Howell. If you remember, we've been talking about that. The meeting was very productive. There were three basic options: rebuild what was out there, bring all the infrastructure up to current design, or then a hybrid, which then uses the open ditches in the neighborhood, but underground for our offsite. Staff will work to address some of the concerns that were brought up last night with each option, and continue to communicate with the neighborhood to eventually reach a general consensus by the neighborhood. So the dialogue continues. Mayor, that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much. Item number eleven are mayor and council reports. These are reports by the city council regarding recent and upcoming events. The city council will not be having our fifth Tuesday work session this next Tuesday, so please have a happy Memorial Day week. The City of Capel seeks residents to serve on special counsel in the Ethics Review Panel. Applications will be accepted online through June thirteenth. Please think about, council, on how we want to go about interviewing those, and if you've got a desire to be on that review panel. Applications for Celebrate Capel will be down Parkway and will be available beginning online yesterday, Monday. Residents and businesses are encouraged to join in on the parade fund by decorating a vehicle, bicycle, or walking along with the parade. There is no charge to enter, however. Applications must be submitted by five PM on Friday, June twenty-fourth, in order to participate. The City of Capel administrative offices will be closed in observance of Memorial Day holiday, May thirtieth. And please join us at the Cosby Library in Community Commons at six PM for our annual budget workshops. Learn about the proposed budget, and enjoy a free scoop of ice cream from Capel's own marble slab creamery. Workshop dates are June sixteenth, twenty-first, twenty-third, and twenty-eighth. Oh, sorry, June, sorry, let me do that again. June sixteenth, June twenty-first, June twenty-third, and July twenty-eighth. Is there, city manager, is there anything that would keep a resident from coming to all three and enjoying ice cream at all three?
My understanding is that we will have plenty of ice cream at each of those meetings. So if you happen to notice, there will be a little, I'll pass this down, a little flyer and poster to help promote. So yes, we are using food to attract people to come to our budget workshop.
Thank you, sir. Item number twelve is council committee reports concerning items of community involvement. Item number 12 is council committee reports concerning items of community involvement. There will be no council action or deliberation permitted. Item A is a report on the Dallas Regional Mobility Coalition, and Councilmember Don Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last quarter, the Mobility Coalition has, we have had a number of guest speakers, including Speaker of the House from Austin, and Representatives Yvonne Davis and Jeff Leach, in talking about the impact that transportation has on the state, especially, they, especially, we're emphasizing how, with the growth of the state, it is key that we keep transportation continuing to grow and continuing to evolve to keep up with the growth. One side note, the DART Silver Line construction meeting, there is a meeting, just reminder for everyone, that on Thursday, June 2nd, at 9:30 a.m. over at George, there will be a Silver Line construction meeting, where you can get some updates. There is a lot of focus on the infrastructure bill that passed a number of weeks ago, and how that money will be divided, and when that money will become available, so there is always a constant reminder for all the different communities and municipalities to have your project shovel-ready, so when the funding presents itself, that we are able to, to, to get these projects running, because if you don't, if you don't have your project ready, someone else does have their project ready. And this is, this readiness is especially crucial for the metroplexes over the, you know, the next 20 to 25 years, we will likely add another 3 million people to this area, so transportation will be crucial. And then, a handful of other smaller additional items related to transportation that will be coming up and will be, some of these will be discussed in the upcoming legislation, legislative session will be an increased focus on a new fee approach for electric vehicles, since gas taxes do not apply to electric vehicles, so there will be discussion around that. There will be continued discussion about the paper license tags that are out there, and there is some rampant abuse going on. I don't know so much in our community as there is in some other communities. They are being abused, and so there will be discussion about how to curtail that abuse. Certainly, how, as more and more charging stations for electric vehicles pop up, how, you know, how will those get funded? And then, there's actually a renewed focus on safety across our transportation network in Texas, as 2021 has, was, proved, proved to be the worst, the worst years from a safety standpoint since about 1981, so there's certainly a renewed focus on that. So, that's what I have.
Thank you very much. Item B is report on the Woven Health Clinic. Councilmember Mark Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. The federal funding through the DSRIP program, which Woven has received for the past 10 years, is ending on September 1st of this year. The state of Texas has redefined the program, so only hospital-owned clinics can participate. The state has further limited the participation to directed Medicaid payments, which excludes 95% of Woven's patients. They are actively working on short and long-term funding plans to replace the $500,000 a year that the DSRIP program provided. It's critical that they maintain this existing funding while they work through their funding transition. To that end, they're working with the city of Capel to leverage some of the American Rescue Funds that are available. Woven is seeing a few positive COVID tests, and overall, the cases are not as severe and far fewer than in the January, February timeframe, and Woven has started up their health events again. Healthy cooking classes and walk with the doc are planned for the fall, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Item C is report on MetroCrest Services by Mayor Pro temp Matthews.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you. MetroCrest Service Organization is a charitable organization providing assistance to Capel residents. I'm going to read some stats for what they have been providing from January to until now. They have provided 379 residents visited the food pantry 807 times, approximately 56,000 pounds, equalling 47,500 meals, 219 meals delivered to our seniors, 56 households utilized our workforce developmental service, 75 households received emergency rent and utility assistance, totaling $102,598. The SAC Summer Hunger Feeding Program for schools aged kids will begin in early June. Capel cares at FUMC will spearhead this program for Capel. MetroCrest Service is in the middle of fundraising for a new facility. Of 15.8 million budget, 12.3 million has been raised and committed. Dirt work on the site has began, with the piers being drilled in the next two weeks. The MetroCrest Service Board conducted the annual strategic retreat, which I had the opportunity to attend. MetroCrest is in the midst of creating a MetroCrest 2030 Plan, in coordination with the opening of a new facility. The plan is to focus on creating opportunity, lifting lives, building community. Four building blocks have been identified with the teams working on each: housing stability, healthcare, nutrition food, and financial empowerment and workforce. That's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro temp. Item D is report on the Historical Society by Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the society has been on again and off again as it relates to the house on South Capel Road. It was not going to be moved, and then it was going to be moved, and now it's going to be moved again. So, anyway, they're going through, through the, working with the city to, to get that project done, and they're going to use it as a, they're actually going to use that house for our visitor center, that they have developed a plan for the society to operate the center for the city, and working closely with the chamber as well to try to keep, you know, you know, to try to develop it. We need to, they felt like it was important that we develop it, so it won't be just, you know, old timers hanging around in bonnets. This will be things that, that visitors will, will get as far as information about the city and things to do. The other thing is, they have worked on the park, in that they've, they've done some work as far as trying to keep the grounds more attractive. One of the interesting things was on the Wilson House, the, we did, the, the society could not get water to the yards to, to water the flowers, and so we were working on that, and we've now got some sprinkler systems, our sprinkler heads operating, plus the fact that we, we now have water at the, at the Wilson House on a consistent basis. When the city and the society investigated why, there was not water out there from time to time. The water department said that they didn't pay their bill. So, anyway, so I think we got that squared away, because they was the city, and so, and so I think we've now got outside faucets that we can put hoses on in order to water where the sprinklers aren't. But that's, that's, they've been quite busy, quite enthusiastic, and so, and we're going to have a number of events for kids at the center. They're going to be, they're, we're putting, the city is putting air conditioning in the vineyard store, because they're using that now as an actual retail store, and selling things out of that store on the weekend. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Item number 13 is public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. I'm going to take the opportunity to thank the, the city as a whole for coming out and supporting Jaclyn Duran on Saturday. There was a fundraiser held down at Andy Brown Central Park, which was included participation from our fire department, our police department, our Parks and Rec, and I'm sure several of the other city departments. There were over 800 people that showed up to donate to Catherine, or to Jaclyn, excuse me. She's a young lady that had a unfortunate accident right before Christmas, and many thanks to councilmembers Mark Hill, Kevin Neves, Don Carroll, and Mayor Pro temp Bijou Matthew for showing up. The superintendent of schools, as well as most of the school board, was also there. Two TV stations, WFAA and KXAS, were also there and provided online live coverage, which was excellent. They had raised $4,000 with a GoFundMe account. Prior to the event on Saturday, they raised about $17,000 that day, so they've now raised $21,000, which was a, it was a great event. The volunteers were out there from about noon till 6:00, and made it a long day, but it was highly successful. So, thanks to the council for participating, and thanks to the city employees for participating. Anybody have any other PSAs? Councilmember Hinojosa Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everybody that the city is hosting free workouts on Tuesday mornings in Old Town from 10:00 to 11:00, and all our, like, community health and wellness providers, like Councilmember Neves, and today, we had BAR, I think it was BAR, that did it, that are out there providing opportunities for us to just take a break and go out and just do some exercise and breathe some fresh air and do the body some good. So, that's happening through the end of June, every Tuesday.
And that was Tuesday at 10:00 a.m.?
Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. in Old Town.
Thank you very much. Item number 14, there was no action necessary from the executive session, so item number 15, there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at 8:10 p.m.